Mr. Francis Hunt, he was better than good. He was a great public servant. He said about twenty years as opposed jury as president, he gonna be so remiss. Let's take a moment of silence for Mr. Hunter. I would thank you. Well, gracious Father, we come to the present day's case. Thanking you for all the blessing you have bestowed on us and even one of us realizing without you, we couldn't ever accomplish anything. And Father, I've been remiss. I just thank you for your son, he is nothing possible. Father, I pray for the jury, each jury here in their families as well. I pray for them, want to tell them our reverence. I pray for this country. I pray for the state, its parents, in our community. I pray for the elderly. I pray for the next fortune. I pray for working office also, Father. I pray for all the youth to get ready to start a new school year. They're looking at me, gracious Father. Most of all, I pray for peace and understanding. God can do it. Look at how much, Father. And everything you've said and done here, I'll be mindful. Give God all the praise and grace and heal him that I pray.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's have you please call it over.
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
President.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Here.
Mr. Michael Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray.
President.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Here.
Dr. Chrissy O'Quinn.
Here.
President Louis Kemp.
Present. So we have a call. I need most approved agenda by Wendy Lee. We're going to release number five on the new business.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, adopted minutes from the July 7th, 2025 regular meeting. Everybody read them.
I'll read them. I'll make the motion.
What's my Mr. Mills?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. New business. Amendment to Elo's contract for LWI soft cost. Miss Caitlin budgeting.
Okay, so in your packet, there is two contracts for, well, I think it's just one of Elo's. We're trying to get those all costs covered from the LWI project, but the invoice that they sent doesn't match the date that the contract is signed. So they're asking for us to amend the contract to match the dates.
Motion to effect.
Why don't the dates match?
The date, so we signed the contract in, at the October date, I believe, but the invoices are backdated to June or July. I would like to cover the exact date.
So this will cover just any work that, that was done for LWI before the resolution was passed.
Project, resolution being done.
And to any other base. And we did, we went through, Mr. Sanders, legal counsel, did say that we would just need to go back to fourth jury as well as.
But why, I don't understand why they started working before they were authorized to work.
They had to be.
By assigned contract. I mean, how did we let somebody work without having a signed contract?
You weren't.
I know, weren't you?
But it, I think doing that, that would be a simple fix and.
From OCDE, they, once the contracts are amended, that it will cover.
Soft cost, the parish anything.
Won't cost the parish anything.
Yeah, motion to effect, please.
Sam, you did look, you looked over this too? Everything's good? Okay, I'll make a motion.
What about Mr. Mills?
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstead. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. Next, amend to PEC contract for LWI soft cost. Caitlin budgeting.
So same thing as the first one, it's just that they're different company, PEC. Same thing, just the, the dates didn't match. Then the contract, you get it covered on the soft cost.
Same difference.
Motion.
Something in place, but this doesn't happen again? Like, do we know what?
It won't happen again.
It probably won't happen again, for sure.
Somebody knows how or why it happens. We don't have a parent to warn.
No.
Yeah, we know how or why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We know why.
The reason ain't here.
We're gonna leave, we're gonna, he's been alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, he gone.
The people in here when this happened.
Oh, yeah, he was.
Yeah, he was here. He was here.
Oh, yes.
Motion.
By Mr. McCray. But Mr. Armstead, more discussion. Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on. Recommendation to reappoint Kevin Garrick as fire district representative on East Feliciana Communication Board. CBO Jeff Williams, police jury representative.
Good evening. In your packet, you have a letter from the director, 911 director, and it is asking for a reappointment with Mr. Kevin Garrick, who's the representative for the fire district. Just a reappointment.
Just a reappointment. What's my Dr. Quinn? Second by Coach Cheatham. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? You're staying. Want to stay? It's testing. Okay, okay. Next on the agenda, recommendation to appoint Justin Neville as town law enforcement representative on East Feliciana Parish Communication Board. CBO Jeff Williams.
Mr. Mark Ducey is asking to be off the board, so it's the recommendation to appoint Mr. Justin Neville as the town law enforcement representative on the 911 board, which was also stated in that letter to the director.
Okay, motion. By Mr. Mills.
I'll make motion.
Second by Coach Cheatham. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Governor.
Committeeing staff report. I don't have one thing, except for committee. Get a resolution, honor Mr. Francis Hunt on his passing. Motion from the jury. What's my, so, more discussion? Most of y'all don't know Mr. Hunt. He was a very Christian, very honest man, very respectful. He was one of the greatest police jurors I ever known. He was, he's my mentor. He taught me everything I know. He gonna be greatly missed in his parents. You wouldn't need to know that. Got motions. Mr. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. You getting rid of Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll be the, got to walk in from three to seven on Thursday and the funeral at 11 o'clock on Friday.
At the Baptist church.
First Baptist church of Clinton.
Small Baptist church.
Yeah, right on. Yeah, right by the town hall. Right by the town hall, the church on the right. Personnel committee.
We actually had two meetings this month, and on the first meeting, we met really to discuss having a process for when we do hiring. And we asked the Chanishia to put together a procedure that would end, end Mr. Jeff and Mr. Frost. Be a procedure that would work across the board for hiring, so that we could be uniform and we could have some reason to rhyme as to what we were doing, and it would be consistent. So although we're not going to interfere with the procedure, we did ask her if once it's made, if she would show it to us, so we would know what it was. Because we felt like, and, and they felt like it fell under day-to-day operations. We have a meeting this afternoon, and Frosty, would you like to come make your recommendations for your employees or tell us?
You made it for a break now, period. Now it's time to make a permit.
Yes, sir. Here I am, Director, Department of Public Works. I'm here on behalf of Cory Lewis. He was hired temporary status. He fulfilled his probationary period, and I'm asking that he be made permanent deputy.
I'll make the motion.
What about Mr. Mills? Second by Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. Anything else for the personnel chair?
Yes, I have one more thing I want to say, and I've said it to those of you that were in the audience for the personnel meeting. We were, DPW was pretty attacked on Facebook last week because he had ten employees, ten trucks, twenty employees on the highway, and it looked like they were having lunch. And he, and I even made a comment in there, and then they kind of turned on us. So I want to commend you because what they were doing, for public record, what they were doing was participating in a class.
Training.
So that they would learn how to do better with our roads, and I want to thank you for scheduling this. And however it went down, it was a great thing, so.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frost.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Did y'all have the lunch out there?
Not quite.
Had a prayer. Don't you got a prayer? That's good. Okay, let's move on. Financier, Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Yes, sir. I have three items. First item is a motion to approve monthly invoices.
Motion.
What's my Mr. Oliver?
Second.
Second by Coach Cheatham. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries.
Second item is recommendation to hire Tanya Nost as senior permit technician at step ten. That would be two steps below what was previously recommended. We, the committee, met and felt like that was a, a good compromise.
Motion.
By Mr. McCray. Second by Mr. Armstead. Any discussion? Is she here? She's not. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries.
Third and final item is information-only vehicle tax for police jury employees. The financial advisor gave us a recommendation that all employees that utilize our governmental vehicles to transport themselves to and from their domicile to work would need to report by the end of this calendar year their usage, and it's rated off of the mileage as well as the blue book value of the vehicle in which they're utilizing to travel back and forth. So we, as a committee, wanted to let the other jurors know and the public that it comes to some expense to the people utilizing the vehicle, but it's considered a perk, and so that's why it's taxed from the federal government, from the IRS.
Just information only right now, right? No action?
No action, just for information. It will be done this year. Starting this year, we'll do that.
It's gonna get done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Information only right now.
It's now the time to do something about it.
Right.
Right. So that's it, Mr. Kent.
Any question for the finance chair? It's time to go move on. Public Works Equipment, Mr. Jason McCray.
First, I got this, President. Frosty, is all the tractors back up yet?
No, sir. When the process, they have one up and run tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, we want to go down.
What's that, the side, side cutter?
Yes, sir. So we hopefully expect to have two on tomorrow, flat tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions?
That's it, Mr. President.
Okay.
What's the chances of these, the cutters with the joysticks, that's the one we're having so much trouble with?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I spoke to the salesman. They're not doing the levers anymore. They can't do the levers anymore, so they strictly joists. It's just an upgraded version, and they're not going back to the levers.
Well, where does that leave us in terms of, you know, like you and I speak about, when you're behind, when you're behind July, you can't even catch up? Now, if we're, if they're not gonna do any better, we need to surplus them and get rid of them and get something that's gonna work. If it's a.
And that's what they're saying. All of them that's coming up, now they got the.
Joist.
So they have old tractor, man, the levers on, and they were.
But it's got to be something else we can do besides keep getting something that's got joysticks that's gonna keep breaking down.
If they're not making a one.
The roads are not wide enough to have the bush hogs, the bush hogs on.
Mm-hmm.
So the next thing is to slope more on the side cutter to be able to reach what we can reach. I'm in the process of looking for a rotary cutter we put on in front of our excavator to help out. And also, we have the brush cutter for the ski steel, but we can only do so much.
Okay, well, let's, let's just start looking into something.
And we cut, we cut grass year-round. We don't just quit, cut something, we cut year-round.
And weeds in the winter. Month of June, we had so much rain too.
Well, what, how about let's think about, if you're gonna put a cutter on the excavator, you get an excavator that's got a cutter on it, that's designated, nothing.
Well, I'm working on it. I gotta, I.
Well, you was talking about a cutter for the excavator.
Okay.
The whole thing, excavator and cutter.
I talked to Mr. Stuart Madison today. He brought me a quote for excavator with a cutter.
Okay.
And cheap.
Okay. The whole combination, that, that's also the cutter, the ditching bucket, the thumb, the whole.
The whole nine.
The whole nine.
Mr. Frost, I'm trying to help you.
I know, I know. I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying. I mean, we got one that's broke, that we waiting on an engine that seems like it takes forever to get. Okay, we got to, we got to minimize between doing bridges, ditching, and culverts with one machine. So, like.
I understand.
Ms. Harris.
I just have something, and it was gonna be one of my, um, administrative comments. We're working, um, gonna begin working with Mr. McCray to have a Public Works and Equipment Committee meeting, probably at the beginning of next month, because Mr. Kyle will have a meeting next week, another meeting next week, so we can get some items and things together for that. That's one of my comments for him and Publics and Properties Committee meetings that we need to discuss this way, so.
We'll get together on Saturday.
In fact, we got a tractor coming in, be October for that. We get a new tractor. We already did last year. It takes time.
This is as soon as we ever got one, for October. I mean, you would think right in a year, year and a half for them to build.
Well, suppose while you're hot, see, how about the, how about the pot of pasture?
It's like the back.
It's, it's back?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's not sleeping no more.
No, woke.
It come out on the 4th of July.
Keep your fingers crossed, it might go back to sleep.
Have you used it yet?
Not long as it's hot, it's all right.
Yeah.
We test drove it today.
Did it work?
It worked. It worked.
That's all I got, Mr. Frost.
Okay.
Not a problem. Appreciate it.
It ain't gonna bother you no more.
Oh, you good.
Building property, Mr. Dexter McCray. I mean, Dexter Armstead.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Dexter McCray. My model, you Jason.
So, yes, sir. I, I have a, dealing with the, the gutters on the health unit. I did get a quote for, for those to, to change the entire gutter process on it. And if you look in your package, you can see what the prices back there. And when we finish talking, Ms. Harris is gonna pick up in her public comp, I mean, in her administrative matters as well. But what that does, I did talk to, with the guys from LA Roofing, they will remove all the gutters, but it does not include any repairs. But I did talk to Mrs. Sanders, since they have the, the tools and equipment down at the, and at the jail, we can save some money. He was more willing to come, once they remove them and do all the necessary repairs. And then the guy will come back and put the gutters up. And like I said, it's just a recommendation here, so. But like I said, I did talk to Ward and Sanders, so we could save some money with, on repairs and wood. But that would do.
I just noticed you got, you got trees growing up in the gutter.
That, that is correct. And also, we walked around and looked there. When he did the tin roof, they put a shingle flashing on top, and that's a no-no. They're gonna eventually have a leak, so he's gonna take that off if we, if we move forward with it. So let's say that. He's gonna remove that shingle flashing and put a flexible tin flash, and we both saw it at the same time, that, that's, that's not supposed to be up there.
Oh, see, we have a thing, those leaf thing, we put those in those gutters, like birds, you have seeds and everything. Everything goes up, you know?
That's true. That's true. So I can ask someone about that and then see. Well, I sure can see what, what the cost would be to ask the leaf guards. But that's the deal, 'cause what happens, when they start leaking like that overflow, and it does rot off the wood over time, so that's what we have in there now, so. And I will say this before we move on. He did, we were gonna talk about just fixing some of the ones that were down, but when we got to walking around, they're in bad shape, so. Like you said, you got grass and stuff growing in them. If we change one side, and then next year, two, you'd be ready to. So whether we just do it all at one time, if we decide to do it.
I agree with you. I don't like band-aiding them. Let's fix it while we're, fix the whole thing, Father.
Yes, ma'am.
And the money can come from here, you're the one that take care of it.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Armstead?
Um, and also, yes, we went over, had a discussion at the park, and just talked about some things over there. Maybe, there's a slab that's already presently there, maybe, maybe trying to put another on in or something up, which would be pretty, wouldn't be that costly, but I hadn't, we hadn't got a cost on. Mr. Frost is supposed to be getting someone out there to take a look at it. But there's a pre-existing slab, so it's not like we have to corn it concrete. So instead, I think they have three out there, and MacManus Parkers would have, they'll have four. And I think that would, that would be more than sufficient with just a blank slab on it, just to kind of update it a little bit. And there are some riding poles on the swing Mr. Frost is gonna get with one of the local fabricating shop here, and maybe just seeing about changing the middle poles, not the whole unit itself, just the riding poles. So you can save some money there without having, because the upper part of the swings and stuff are in good shape, it's just the poles that's touching the ground that are bad. So we're trying to be more cost-efficient as we can, but yet make everything safe, you know?
Any question for Mr. Armstead? Mr. Armstead?
Yes, I'm finished. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, administrative matter. Ms. Harris.
So the first is PA grant and hazard mitigation project updates in your binder. We had some information from the, we were signing community last week. HPA came out and gave us some updates on where we are with the grants, the money that's coming in, and what we're doing on, and also projects. So you could look in your binder if you have any questions about the PA grant. I could show you where you can sign that information, and also have Mr. Pugh along here about the hazard mitigation projects, if you want to get any kind of update on it, which is not included in the hack, but we did touch on it.
We done that generator project? Yeah. I just, I got four things on here. The safe room, we're waiting on FEMA's approval that went in last November, and we hadn't heard anything from them. So it's all moving snail mail right now, waiting on their approval on it. So the safe room's still on. We got another year extension on it. But we're still waiting for everything right now to get the approval on it. The 911 center, the hurricane retrofit for the windows, roof, and doors, just take out the ones that are just real cheap, and they put hurricane ones in. So if we do get hit by something, we don't lose the old 911 center. And we're waiting on that one, too. It's been sent in for, well, this month, maybe a year, and hadn't heard anything back. And that's the answer on a lot of our stuff. Generator project, we gotta do RFQ for the engineering firm to be picked. We thought we might could have pigtail off of the one we have for the other engineering firm, but we can't. So we gotta do all that. Hurricane Francine reimbursement, it should be in this week or next week. They said one to two weeks, we should have it in. And that was last week, so that'd be thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cents on there. And that's our seventy-five percent reimbursement that's coming back to us.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Pugh?
Yes, um, if you all don't have any questions about that, if you would also, because we did get the quote, and because it's been discussed in the meeting before, and Mr. Armstead had already mentioned the fixtures of the gutters at the health unit, I wanted to know if you would all go ahead and approve that project to be paid for with the health unit fund, and they do have the funds there.
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Let me see. Second by Dr. Quinn. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries.
And a few other updates. We're now transitioning from QuickBooks to Intact, which is our new software system for our finances. Our first training session was with Falk and Winkler, and that was on July 10th. And we also have another transition day, I mean, training day on tomorrow. So everything is going well with, it's taking a little time now, because we have to go back to the beginning of July, and everything that we put in QuickBooks, we have to move it over, but the transition is going, is going well with that. The second thing I have is all of the engineering packets are due by 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, and the finance committee will meet sometime next week. Mr. Flanagan will let the finance committee know when he would like to call a meeting. That'll be next week to score and bring a recommendation to the full jury for the August 4th meeting. So the deadline is on the 23rd, and that's a Wednesday. And afternoon on that Thursday, finance committee members can come by and get your packets. So you can begin reviewing them and scoring them before the finance committee meeting that Mr. Kyle calls. Got it? Okay.
Y'all got your gift card? Hope you got your gift.
I know I kind of put, but, yeah.
So this is all Mr. Kyle's fault.
Yeah. We're gonna blame Mr. Flanagan, finance here.
Well.
Yeah, you got another one.
We're not gonna blame anyone. And I will also have a discussion with Lauren from Falk and Winkler on pinning down dates to meet with the remaining outside entities that have funds budgeted in the general fund. I will talk with her about that tomorrow and work on getting some dates discussed. I think we only have two, or maybe three, no more than three more, that we have to have the discussion with. And we are also on track with resolutions and advertisements for the health unit proposition that will appear on the October 11th ballot, and remember, this is not a new tax.
It's a rededication.
The cost is approximately thirty-eight thousand, two hundred, but that's something that I have written down to discuss with Lauren tomorrow, too, to see if General has to eat the entire cost. Some of the funding will go to Roden Bridge. I don't know. I'm just gonna speak with the financial advisors about that to see if General Fund has to pay the entire cost. I told you about the DPW and Buildings and Properties meeting sometime for next month, so your chairman will be getting in touch with you once we work together, the department heads, to see what items we have or what items you all have, and it's approved by the, the chairman of the committees. We'll get with you on a date for those committee meetings. And I believe the last thing is our annual WIC breastfeeding awareness month is in August, so we'll be doing the, the baby shower for WIC participants again. So the invite reads, WIC Breastfeeding Awareness Month, oh, baby. The East Feliciana Parish Health Unit will be hosting their annual baby shower for pregnant and breastfeeding women. Please join us for breastfeeding education, games, door prizes, and refreshments Wednesday, August 27th, 2025. That'll be at the health unit from 11:00 to 1:00, and this invitation is for WIC participants only. No walk-ins, no additional guests. That's to secure the spot. You need to RSVP. You can call someone at the health unit, but this is. but this is only for, um, parents that are pregnant or breastfeeding. That's all I have.
Mr. Mitt?
Uh, October election, uh, election also has criteria for school board proposition.
Well, they've extended, they've extended, they're not gonna have.
Yeah, I heard. What about the, what about the library?
You said the school board, right?
Yeah.
They've extended it, they're not gonna have.
Library was gonna have something on next ballot, too, someone was telling me that.
I hadn't heard from the library.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's too late, no. But I want to pound to these jurors, it's nine of us on this board, let's push this proposition, we're trying to get our general fund in the audience. It's just a rededication, that's what we're calling it, get this done, it's nothing impossible, but you got to work it. Nothing comes easy, okay?
The most important thing is just explaining to the people that this is not a new tax.
That's it.
People got the misconception of it, and we, you got to get that out, just, right.
We gotta do it.
And you got to be able to explain it to them if they ask you a question, 'cause they gonna ask you.
And I believe Mr. Lewis told me he's challenging the jurors to get out in their district, as you did during election time, to let your, um.
Constituents know.
Know that this is not a new tax. Either way it goes, they're gonna pay the tax, because it's already there. This is just to distinguish what goes to General Fund and what goes to Roden Bridge.
Isn't there a fine line between what we can do there, uh, like, can we make yard signs type thing?
No.
No, we know, no, we can't.
We can do that.
No, we can't.
Uh-uh.
Now, what I do, when people call me with whatever, I, when we get through with their stuff, I explain it, what's fixing to happen.
Yeah.
So, please come out on October eleventh, we're not giving you a new tax, we just need this help.
Yes, we do. Anything else, Harris?
And this will help the general fund, because you all know that you do a lot to help with the council on aging, for age.
I accept.
Defenders of, you know, you all, if this is the only fund that you could actually help, you know, different organizations out in the community. So, if the general fund does not have this money, then we'll possibly.
Have to make some cuts.
Well, that'd be your decision, but do some cutting.
Where in South.
In these other places. And I know that you all don't want to do that.
We don't, especially with the elders, no. Okay, anything else, a question, let's move on. Homeland Security, I think you spoke already, but.
Be good.
We go, okay. Commission board plan is on a meet next Tuesday. Public comment, three minutes, please.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay, tomorrow. Public comment.
Uh, yes, I have real quickly, um, on Friday, uh, I wanna commend Mr. KJ here, 'cause I was already in, Mr. Frost and Mr. Team. I was outriding around on one lit road, I got a call for, but Mr. KJ was out, already riding around with his paper and pen, just kinda see right before ending potential wake of a storm. So, Mr. KJ, appreciate you. Mr. Frost, thank you for sending them out and riding, I just happened to bump into him, because I talked to you. And I saw him outriding, and I talked to him as well, and he took care of something for me, right there, because he was on that road. Mr. KJ, again, thank you, and y'all keep doing what you need to do, appreciate y'all. Yeah, and one other thing, Mr. Kent, uh, excuse me, President Kent.
No problem, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Mr. Roy Adams talked about the road being closed on ten, gone, I guess it would be gone by, Saul?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, thank you, Mr. Oliver, correct me on sixty-eight. And the reason he mentioned that to us, because when they closed that road, he was thinking that Lyon Road is gonna be one of the hotspots for traveling. So, we may want to be in prepared for a lot of traffic on that road.
Where exactly at sixty-eight, y'all think that was gonna be?
You know, when you pass DCI, when you come down, that, that lit.
Where that?
That bridge, yes, they gonna close that, he says already the pipe, it's, it's a goal, it's just, we hadn't figured, when they gonna actually start on. But it's gonna happen, and he was thinking Lyon Road is gonna be one of the hotspots for.
It's a hotspot now.
Already, it's gonna be, yeah.
That's gonna be a lot.
Mr. Mills, give us some statistics, so everybody will understand how busy Lyon Road is.
Yeah, I know, what, what, in a, in a, in twenty-four hours, it was seventeen hundred and, how many vehicles, seventeen, seventeen thirty-two in twenty-four hours, on Lyon Road.
Real traveled road.
It's a busy road, and.
You aware of it? You're aware?
I've heard about that.
We need that information. Can we reach out to someone to see what they have, what they told, or, um.
I want to compliment the jury also, when I first got elected, we was a reactive jury, everything was by reaction, but now we're proactive, and we trying to stay on top of everything, and that's, that's a good thing. To be a proactive, instead of reactive. Is there any more comments?
I have one comment, while I'm sitting here, I got a text message that said, "Great job on the gravel road," and I thought it was different road, and they correct, they corrected me, and they said, "The gravel part of Gross Road," which is a road that we fight about, I want to always give it to Kyle, but I'm not real sure whose road it is, I think it's Kyle's road, but anyway, um.
Thanks, message.
So, anyway, um, people are noticing that you're doing a good job.
You're doing a good job. Now, I would compliment our employees, I really do, 'cause I don't give very many compliments.
No, they don't, you know, yeah.
And then he, I, I said, "Thank you" from me and from Kyle, and he said, "You're welcome," I know y'all probably don't, never get nothing but complaints.
That's all we get. If not, anything else, if not, you tend to both the jury.
Tell me.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirty-six minutes.
I have to tell you for the last.
Well, another one down, bro. On the morning. Yep. I just, yeah, just like me when I stood up, it was all, it just like it rushed down to my feet. We're just getting over the deal. You know what? I would like to have a, have a day where I can get up and not. See what's gonna happen now. Which one gonna be hurting me today? And if I don't hurt, I say, "Thank you."